Here a little echo, thank you. To our work session, today is Monday, March 20th. Board members present in the boardroom, we have members Jacobs, members Holloman, members Lessons, and member Bellamy. And I will announce the other members as they either arrive online or in the boardroom. So today, we are going to start out with our board request for information. And I think what I want to do is, we have them listed in Board Connect. Is there any that's not there that you are interested in? Because those are the ones we are working on right now. And if we can pull those up, let's just try to run them through our little process really quickly. We also have Superintendent Bryant with us today, I forgot to mention that. We have various staff with us, as well as our executive assistant, Ms. Foster. No problem. Just want to make sure we. I can probably pull them up as well. Okay. Okay, so there are, um, let's see, if you could scroll down just up a little bit so I can see the bottom. Um, okay, long range, and now back to the top. So we have three that you can see there, 2022, 23, virtual learning during COVID. That request, we, I think, I think that was member Donley, I think. Um. Do we, do we, is there any way to pull up Board Connect? No, not Board Connect, but do you have that? I'm trying to figure out how to see who submitted them.
This one was member Donley.
Okay. All right, member Donley, did you still want this information? The virtual, I think you want it, um, learning, the ASD have only days, the days. Citizen asked you, how many days the ASD have only virtual learning days during the COVID school shutdown?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm what day we stopped having direct instruction in classrooms? And then what day we restored having direct instruction in classrooms?
Okay, so, uh, okay, I got that kind of emblazoned in my memory, but Dr. Bryant.
That information is readily accessible and we could produce that for Board Connect.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that's very quick to get. Our next one. Uh, the Governor, Governor Dunleavy's, let's see. In light of Governor Dunleavy's proposal, this is member Lessons. Um, he make the teacher certification process less onerous, quote unquote. They develop, sorry, trying to smile and my eyes are bad. And develop a fast track apprentice program for state, for the state of Alaska. I would like to see ASD's ROI on our highly qualified teachers care, care of this year's. What's that FWW? Yes, why don't you speak to your, I mean, your.
Yeah, this is a question that came to mind the day that Governor Dunleavy made a press release. And I was really interested in better understanding the relationship between student growth and teacher degree level. And there probably are different ways to assess that. But I, I do have a general suspicion that we should follow Finland as far as supporting highly qualified teachers. And my hypothesis is that perhaps student growth can be seen according to level of teacher preparedness.
Okay.
So I'd be open to other ways of exploring that.
Sure, great question. So I did consult staff and it would take several hours of staff time. But if there were interest from the board, we could produce this within the next two weeks.
In the next two weeks. Um, is there anyone else that's interested in this information? That will take, okay, member Jacobs and member Lessons. So, uh, that's a two week timeframe. That good? Thank you. And so the next one, is that it? I think there's one more. Member Lessons, let's have you speak to this one as well.
Sure, this is also in response to the governor's press release and I forget the name, the number of the bill that was unrolled or rolled out in response. But it asks for information on our actual teacher vacancies. If we do look historically at this current year and projections for next year with respect to the number and percent vacant in correspondence versus brick and mortar schools? And especially in our title versus non-title schools? And this is again in response to the governor's interest in promoting teacher retention through one-time carrots to all of the teachers in Alaska. Teacher retention is really important, but I'm concerned that a flat amount per teacher would be an ineffective use of state funding, would usurp local control because it wouldn't allow the board to target funding in effective ways, doesn't address acute needs within certain ASD schools, and doesn't address like more comprehensive challenges of workplace conditions. And again, my hypothesis is that, well, at least I'm not aware of like dramatic shortages within our correspondence teachers, for instance. And I strongly suspect that our title schools may have more vacancies than our non-title schools. But that's just a hypothesis. And I think that the idea of teacher retention is really important, but I'd like to do that in a data-driven way.
Thank you. Dr. Bryant?
This information is readily accessible, though I do want to put out there that there is a tiny caveat where title schools can fluctuate from year to year. So we will need to make some caveats when we present the data. But it is accessible and we can put it in Board Connect.
The next Board Connect or the?
Uh, I believe the next Board Connect, yeah.
Awesome, thank you. I, I would be interested in seeing that as well. All right, so that takes care of our RFIs. Are there any other RFIs from the board? All right, thank you, board. Let's move on to the bond communication update. Dr. Bryant?
Great, good afternoon, ASD board and community. As we all know, there is an upcoming ASD bond proposition on the April 4th ballot. We'll provide a brief overview on our efforts being made to make the community aware of this information. I'll pass it on to our Chief of Communications and External Affairs, MJ Tim.
Welcome. You have three minutes, no, I'm joking, you have more than three.
Thanks.
Hey, good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to brief you guys on where we are with our bond messaging since our communications committee meeting a few weeks ago. So we got a short PowerPoint presentation for you guys, just to kind of take a look. And I'll just get down to the quick and dirty. So what we have this year is a new logo to move away from what we had for the last several years, just a fresh look at this. And so we created our billboards, our signs and our trifolds. We just really wanted to go for a fresh look and really tap into the ASD blue for our overall messaging. And so we stuck to the meat and potatoes of what the bond is about. Really tried to get back to basics for what you all approved, which was security and safety upgrades. And so that's the gist of our messaging for our billboards and our other signage. We also moved forward and did translations like we did for our signage for back to school. And we chose the top three languages for the district, which is English, Spanish and Samoan. So Kathy, if you could push forward, there is both of the versions. So we have the English, the Spanish and the Samoan right there for you. Those billboards are placed around our school locations, specifically the ones that are on the board, I mean, on the bond, as well as other locations where we have some high-traffic area for folks to just get the information about the bond. And so our narrative for our bond this year is again focused on security and safety upgrades and really just kind of gave a historic of where we are with our buildings and the need for the improvements from this bond. Kathy, next slide. And so for the trifold and other messaging such as this trifold, we really stuck to the three main points, which is the security vestibles, the roof and whatnot on, on there on your screen. And then the main amount for the bond as well. Kathy, next slide. Also, we've outlined a map that gave a breakdown for the buildings and the specific schools, as well as breakdown for each individual cost. We provided that in the trifold as well as on our website. Kathy, next slide. We also provided a graphical support to help explain what this meant for taxpayers. Kathy, next slide. And then we have a radio spot. So my technical skills with this might not work. So I got the radio spot in here for you guys to take a listen to. And it's a 30-second spot that's airing on the main radio stations that we have here in our market. It's a 30-second spot. Okay, that's okay. My technical skills did not work on this. Let's try the video, Kathy. Yeah. Hey, and there's me in my ASD blue. Okay, so we created the same, okay, here we go.
District bond proposition supports more than 80 schools with safety and security upgrades. Without major improvements, a school's functional life ranges between 30 and 50 years. But many of ours were built in the 1960s and 70s and from time to time need more than standard care. The primary source comes from voter-approved bonds in the April 4th municipal election. To learn more about Proposition 1, visit ASDK12.org and click on Hot Topics.
So that's the 30-second spot that's airing on a variety of radio stations here in our market. And then we have a video spot that's also airing on KTUU and KYES as well as digital for YouTube. That did not work, Kathy, so we can just fast forward, I didn't get a chance. But if board members would like a, a link to that, we can provide that to you as well. So you guys can take a look at it for yourself. And then we also have the website. We stuck to the same concept that we had last year with our bond and built the webpage around that as well, centered on our fresh look and a breakdown of the different categories that I discussed earlier. We also have earned media, so we did a Make It Monday presentation last Monday. And so we had KTUU and KYES there to cover as well as the Anchorage Daily News. We will have another opportunity for our media partners to do a story tomorrow, where we have confirmation from a couple of other media outlets that'll go ahead and do a story and then really kind of take a look inside some of our schools and really showcase the need when it comes to roof repairs and, and whatnot. So we have that planned up on deck for tomorrow.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions? Oh, let the record show that member Higgins has joined us in the boardroom. Any questions for MJ? Yes, member Jacobs.
Thank you, man, president, not a, not a question so much as a comment. Thank you, MJ, for your work and your team's work on that, the effort. And then my inner geek wants to point out that the, although the trifold might only be available in three languages in the signage, our website through Google Translate is available in dozens of languages. And there's that option at the bottom of the webpage too, for folks to be pointed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Lessons?
I want to say a comment and an appreciation. So thank you for, for your work and the work of your team. I received a postcard in our mailbox about the bond in a timely fashion. I think it came on Saturday, so that was great. Can, I don't, I don't know if you said or maybe I didn't hear, can that video be put onto the Hot Topics page?
Yeah, that's the intention. So we're also producing an in-house video. And so that's the, so the video that we have out right now and on air, I'm working on a different version that I would like to have a little bit longer. So that's actually being produced today. So I'll upload that. It's just, we only have a certain amount of time for our television partners. And, and so this gives us an opportunity to get a little bit more deeper into the details.
Very good. Any other comments? I just want to add, thank you. Are the schools, have, will they have access to this document?
Yes, actually, we talked about this earlier this morning in Cabinet. And so the schools on the bond will have that information as well to them. And then they can choose on how they want to share that with their families and their staff. But they definitely will have that available for them if interested.
Okay, very good. Okay, with that, seeing no other hands or comments, thank you very much, Ms. Tim.
Thank you so much.
All right, so next we'll transition into a conversation about professional learning communities. So one of my beliefs as an educator is that professional development should not be an event, but rather a set of ongoing experiences. I also see immense value in supporting teachers with job-embedded time to collaborate with their colleagues on teaching and learning strategies. So by expanding the professional learning community model district-wide, there could be an opportunity to invest in making progress towards our goals and guardrails. So the team will provide a high-level overview of our proposal and hear from you on what other information the board might need before making any decisions on this type of a change. So I'll kick it off to the team.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Board members, good to see you this afternoon. My name's Kirsten Johnson, for the record, Senior Director of Secondary Teaching, oh, sorry, Secondary Education, that's a different title for a different time. I wanted to introduce the panel here today, just so you know who's at the table. Eric Visti from Elementary Education, Chris Opitz from Assessment Evaluation, Diana Beltran from Teaching and Learning. And then, first time I think you're introduced with a new title, Senior Director of Middle School, Joseph Wadney. So essentially, we, I wanted to introduce everybody and just start, kick us off. Professional learning communities is something that has some history in ASD. But we want to propose a new model to you for consideration today. But we want to walk through some of the purpose and the history and just why before we dive into a new proposal. I also wanted to introduce the panel because this is really a team effort from the academic services side of the house to really create some movement in our district around student achievement. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Visti to kick us, or sorry, Joseph Wadney to kick us off today.
Thank you, Kirsten. So before we dive into the proposal and the PLC discussion for, for implementation next year, we wanted to, to give you a foundation for what PLCs are. And a great way to start that is to, is to hear from one of the, the experts in the PLC and educator collaboration work, Richard Defore. A lot of our, a lot of our teachers and teams have had an opportunity to learn from Mr. Defore and his team. And, and through his work, he defines PLCs as opportunities for educators who are committed to working collaboratively in ongoing processes of collective inquiry using culturally responsive action research in order to improve achievement for students. The idea is that working together in these PLCs, professional learning communities, educators can operate under assumptions that key to improve, the key to improve learning for students is that continuous job-embedded learning for educators. PLCs provide teachers an opportunity to collaborate and improve student achievement. So our vision as, as the academic team is to foster that continuous collaboration among our professional learning staff in order to address our mission to educate all students for success in life. So some of the key aspects of the PLC, the professional learning cycle is we're, we're able to provide teacher-driven professional learning model. Educators work, they think together collaboratively. And they focus on and, and research areas of their professional careers. Over the course of several weeks, they work to, to come to some understanding of a topic and improve what they do in the classroom. They examine student outcomes using data. It's a data-driven model in order to close the achievement gaps. And we would be addressing the guardrails that we have in place for student needs. It allows teachers to apply those new learnings while being held accountable for those practices and that time. Often, they will come together and share with their colleagues what they've learned through those cycles to help others in their collaborative needs. It's embedded opportunities for teachers to choose the direction that they need in order to improve professionally and for students. And it provides greater cohesion across, across the building. And finally, it does build that teacher collective efficacy that we know is so important. So I'd like to turn it over to Chris Opitz, who can give us a real-world understanding of how this works in an elementary school as he had the opportunity to employ PLCs at Huffman Elementary.
Thank you so much. Yeah, so this is going back to my days as a principal at Huffman Elementary. I want to emphasize this is one model, right? And when you look at the research behind PLCs, there's some different ways to do these and it might vary from level to level. And so just to clarify, this is an elementary model. When I was at Huffman, you know, it was typically a relatively high-performing school. But what, what I, when I looked at the data more closely, we had about 25% of our kids that were underperforming pretty consistently. And so through a lot of research and actually work with Solution Tree and the Defores, that, that's the same model that we used at Huffman, we began to investigate. And I'm just going to kind of walk you through what we did as an example. And so the first thing we did is we spent a lot of time reading as adults, right? Reading about what a PLC is, what a PLC is not, and building sort of collaborative norms, coming to an agreement that students at this school were all our students. We don't shut our doors, we work in collaboration because we can't do it alone. And so we had some sort of guiding principles that helped us get started with that. It is about, it's about people and a process, it is not a program. It's about people and process, and it's only as good as the people and the time that they collaborate. That was also a guiding principle. And really, that speaks to the idea of collective efficacy. In other words, they are all our students. If, if we don't do it today, who's going to? And so it's really taking responsibility for the kids that are in our care at a building level. And so some of the logistics, staff met once per week in grade-level teams. They met in grade-level teams because they looked at assessments together and they needed to look at the same assessment in order to be able to sort of compare and contrast what was happening. Hey, I had real high success here, here's what happened, or, or my kids really struggled with this. And so they were sharing very explicit practices based on student outcome data and the assessments that they brought to the table. I would say the biggest challenge that we faced at this time, they, they chose to meet either before school or after school or during their planning time. This was a number of years ago. And, and staff came and just said, you know, this is just really hard to find the time. And so we ended up moving that to staff meeting time. And they were super appreciative of that. That was definitely one of the biggest hurdles and roadblocks because as you know, time for a teacher is their most valuable asset. And so I, I very much understood that. And then, of course, we moved to two staff meetings per month and it just sort of logistically became more and more difficult to implement. So in terms of what we did, as you, on your screen, you notice four main questions. These four questions drove everything that we did. Number one, what do we want students to know and be able to do? It is a laser focus on the standards and learning targets that we expect kids to, to, to master. And what we know is if we focus on everything, we really focus on nothing. And so the team really developed what they believed was the highest priority standard. We use priority standards or clipboard checks and then some teams morphed into maths. The primary teachers worked with their report card, their standards-based report cards. Anyway, they focused on a particular standard. And every week that they came to meet, they, they brought that evidence of student learning. So really, it is a reframing, instead of about talking about what are we teaching, we're actually looking at student data to say, what have they learned or not learned? So that's really question number one and number two. Because we, we ask ourselves, how do we know if they've learned it or not? And so from that step, looking at it collaboratively, they, they then decide, what is, what is a trend or pattern that I'm seeing that I am going to address? And I'm going to close this specific gap with this class? Or maybe it's a small group of students that don't have a particular skill. What am I going to literally do next week to close this gap? One of, one of the guiding features is if no action comes out of a PLC, it's a waste of time. That's the truth, right? If we don't change our practice, whether that's through our collaboration, the lessons that we've learned, sharing best practices and what we're doing in the classroom. So it's really, it's, it's leveraging that professional knowledge in, in our schools with the experts in our building. And they brought it, like, they, they have great knowledge and great experience if they have the time and space to share that. And then on the other end is what, what will we do to respond when some students already know it? So how do we enrich or accelerate for those kids that might already know it? And over the course of the years, again, this is one piece of a larger puzzle, but we had, you know, working with our instructional coach and our curriculum implementation, they made significant gains across the board, up to 10 to 12 points in our MAP scores in Alaska's peaks at that time. But it was really our staff collaborating, sharing their knowledge, making a really specific plan to close gaps. And so it's really their, their work and dedication to collaboration that made that happen.
All right, and, but Mr. Opitz since then, Huffman got a Blue Ribbon Award in his last year from, from the work that they did there too. So thanks for being humble. But, um, so the other thing to add to that is from the research and benefit practice, John Hattie is one of the stronger researchers regarding instructional practice and visible learning. And so when you look at the organized structures that we need to design to foster this culture and foster this climate, you have to have common practices and methods that then allow teachers to have that independence in practice and how they apply their knowledge and skills and professionalism. And so, you know, to achieve the student growth that we're looking for and as aligns to teacher preparedness and preparation and time, organizing teachers in those collaborative teams and then working them to build that culture allows for the ability for our schools to lift the learner needs that we have in our community. And so the ability to do that in competing with some of our challenges that we have between staffing and subs and all those pieces, the time and structures are very, very important for our teachers to be able to move the needle. And so John Hattie really outlined some of those key factors that are important to have those data conversations and improve instructional routines and practices. Next slide. So some of the common practices is really that focus on student learning, using data to have, drive the conversation, to reflect on the outcomes of those conversations and those work, to make learning visible, to use teacher collaboration and leading to that change in, in adult behavior that moves to the student needle. Engaging in honest conversations about student progress. And then analyzing also student work. It aligns with our, our goals and guardrails, looking at our math data, our reading data, teacher practices. It fosters that self, that sense of efficacy, the collective efficacy when you go back and have, Hattie's work has an effect size of up to 1.57. So that's incredibly powerful when you look at, at the effect size. It also increases staff morale, the connectedness that our educators would have. Could be, you can move across either content areas, you can move across grade-level teams, the fluidity and the dynamics and the flexibility that you have allows, allows schools to be nimble also. It also works with recruitment and also retention for staff. The link in here, when you get the slide deck, will have a list and an opportunity to be able to have a whole laundry list of peer-reviewed research for you to look at also. It does support, PLCs do support our implementation. We're moving forward with our K3 reading adoption for next year. This would align and work parallel with that reading adoption. We'd be prepared to launch that. It also aligns with math, it goes into science, art. And so the opportunities for all of our educator staff to participate, this is really one of the, one of the benefits. It also connects with our college and career and life-ready initiative, inclusive practices, and then our future looking at sixth grade, going to middle school.
So before we go on to a proposal, I think it's important to understand the historical context of PLCs in the Anchorage School District. And so I'm not going to read this slide word for word, but I wanted to just give a brief history of, of the PLCs. Diamond High School was the first school to implement PLCs originally in 2006. And they've actually had PLCs ever since. They've since morphed into our overall high school plan of PLCs that's been ongoing for a couple of years. They've since morphed into our overall high school plan of PLCs that's been ongoing for a couple of years now. They were followed by Polaris and a couple of other high schools over the years. It became evident to us that around the summer of 2018, that it was a direction that many of our educators and principals wanted to move towards. So we could create that professional space to do that collaboration work. And so during the summer of 2018, there was a calendar committee formed to recommend a calendar. But part of the discussion was district wide PLCs during that time and a survey was put out where 63% of the respondents were open to the idea of districts wide PLCs at that time. As we moved into the 1819 school year, the PlAT committee was formed, the Professional Learning Advisory Team. They really researched and came up with a district wide definition of PLC, explored the readings and the research and how it would be implemented and all of the logistics. Alongside that work, our high schools were also doing similar work because many of our high schools had already engaged in PLCs, but we had not done it across all of our comprehensive high schools. And so that research and planning was ongoing. Much of that was halted unfortunately, pretty drastically by the pandemic during that time. And so focus moved on to pandemic response. And so in the 1920s school year, there was still some ongoing thought processes around it, but it wasn't the urgent focus at that time during the pandemic. Despite that, high schools did move forward in the 2021 school year to implement PLCs across the board at all of our comprehensive high schools. And during, around the same time, our middle schools incorporated PLCs into their collaboration time as well. And so that's where we sit now with our current structure. So if you look at what our schools are doing today with PLCs, every comprehensive high school, we affectionately call them the big eight, are engaged in PLCs in a late start Monday. And so students on Mondays attend school from 8:15 to 2 o'clock, when typically every other day of the week, they start at 7:30 at the high school level. So some of, like I had said before, some schools have been participating for many years. Some are two years into this implementation. And in the next structure, we would recommend continuing that. In our middle school level, like I had said, in our collaboration time model, PLCs are embedded within that time currently. So our staff do know that process and it's currently there. The big gap you see though, however, is at the elementary level. Currently, there is no space right now in their day for professional learning communities. And that's where we are today and what our schools are doing. So when we look at the next slide, which I'll turn over to Joe, addressing that gap at the elementary level is pretty critical from our lens as the academic services team.
Thank you. So moving forward, leadership recommends moving to a district wide PLC structure in which all educators at all levels can engage in this collaborative discourse. Our recommendation is that we move to a weekly PLC that would affect all comprehensive schools. Schools would start one hour later for students on those PLC Mondays so that our educators have an opportunity to collaborate on those Mondays. This would increase the amount of time that middle and high schools currently have to engage in this work. But it will also give us the time that our educators feel like they need to do that. Some of the considerations that came out of the PlAT conversations back in 2018 and 19 that led us to the Mondays were some considerations such as it was something that those high schools that had already engaged in this practice had been using Mondays. For a lot of our schools that use block scheduling, it's easier to do a late start on a Monday as opposed to a midweek system. It's easier for teacher attendance. We tend to have more educators, professionals in buildings, less trainings and things like that on Mondays. And so it allows them to engage in that discourse. And then we tend to see fewer student activities and other obligations that teachers might have on Mondays or on other days of the week. And so Mondays tend to have better participation from all educators. On the next slide is a visual representation of what this would look like. Quite simply, staff come to work at their normal time to engage in this PLC work. Students would arrive and begin the work in their instructional day one hour later than they normally would. So for instance, a high school student, instead of starting at 7:30, would start at 8:30. And the one hour, you know, difference between the levels helps with our tiered transportation, which is one of the main considerations of making a plan like that work.
So to support the work of professional learning cycles at the building level, it does take some resources. And so part of the proposal is the staffing structure that you see here. Some of this is currently funded at the secondary level already and there would be an additional funding piece that would need to come at the elementary level. Currently, we already employ a teacher expert for the secondary level in PLCs. This person and position manage all the logistics of PLC time. They also manage the collaboration time at the middle school level. There is a lot of professional development that they are responsible for implementing and carrying out. They work collaboratively on individual bases with different PLC leads and buildings and principals to help them guide the work at the site level. And they also develop a lot of resources to use in the PLC model so that our teachers can focus on the classroom, not chasing down research and articles. They really rely on that teacher expert to help feed them that work so that they can focus on the kids at the site level. The other piece we would recommend is a counterpart in the elementary level. This would be an additional staff piece that we would recommend. And then the other piece of our structure to support the work is having site based PLC specialists, which is an addenda position at the site level. Currently, our high school site based PLC specialists receive a level one addenda. So it's work that they do outside of their teaching duties. And their job is essentially to lead the PLC work for their building and collaborate with the principal. And then also that teacher expert on the district side that I just mentioned. So we would recommend we have these at every single building to really work side by side with the principal to implement effective PLCs in our district. So kind of switching gears a little bit, if we look at each level of school and how it would look if this proposal were accepted moving forward, high schools would continue to maintain their PLC practices, just as they have currently. There is a link there that when you receive the PowerPoint, if you want to look at the consistent elements of a high school PLC, you could look at those. That's really where you see like the staff accountability, like what they're required to do and engage in. So everybody's very clear about the expectations of that time. It's not a sit in your classroom, like grade your assignments. They're actively engaged in a process outlined. The one, there's two larger changes for the high school level. One is we would extend the 45 minute timeframe to 60 minutes in this proposal. And part of the reasoning for that is that we have, after two years of implementation at the high school level, 45 minutes is a fairly rushed time to really dive deep into a topic. That extra 15 minutes makes a huge difference for our educators when they're really trying to dive in deep with data and a topic. And so we would extend that time. The other part that would change at the high school level is that busing would adjust to the one hour later start time. Currently, at the high school level, if students need to ride the bus, they come to school on Monday and there is supervision for their students and it takes staff away from the PLC time, which is not necessarily a bad thing because schools have done really creative things with that time for kids during that extra 45 minutes. However, if we have busing where kids arrive when the school day starts, it allows more of our staff to be engaged in the PLC work that's going on. And then we would continue the professional development and staff support that we've provided these past couple of years as well. So I'd like to switch over to middle school and have Joe explain what that would look like.
So a move to the district wide PLC would essentially modify some of the work that's already happening in the middle schools. As a part of our current collaboration time structure, we are implementing PLCs one day a week in that 45 minute period. And while it's good for our staff to be able to engage in that work and it does, you know, speak to and improve their work with students, it does take one day away that they would otherwise be engaged in. Maybe some data specific work with students, working on their individual needs, working on worry lists and some of the other pieces that go into collaboration time. So moving to a district wide PLC would give those educators time to do the same collaborative work with their peers. But it would give 45 minutes a week back to that specific student support that happens during collaboration time. Much like high school, it gets us an hour to do this collaborative work. And I think we're going to see a real benefit with that added time. One of the, you know, advantages to a strong PLC district wide, this program is it allows educators from all levels to collaborate together on vertical teaming of concepts and needs that students might have. And so I see that as a real benefit here. And then looking ahead to the full transition of sixth grade to middle school in the next two years, providing this time at the building level for staff to understand how adjustments and student needs might be different, having three levels of students in their building. And then as we have perhaps elementary teachers coming into middle schools, it provides an avenue for some added training and learning the middle school model.
So with elementary, instead of the modification, it's going to be an implementation. The big parts that we're going to be looking at will be a focus on advanced student learning, meeting and collaborating on a regular basis. Part of the obstacle that we currently have is that ongoing professional development that our elementary teachers, paraprofessionals, staff are missing. So that would be a huge benefit to this. The promotion of the spirit of collaboration, the structures of how we collaborate, the inquiry model and reflection and using data to help guide and guide those conversations. And then using actual student work and the practice and those common formative assessments that we have to be able to help teachers see how the outcomes of our practices are impacting student learning in a real time, live instead of a benchmark or an annual assessment tool. It also intentionally supporting PLC meetings would have a schoolwide guidance. So what we would want to be starting with is a strong model that would help take and bring 57 elementary schools together. And so that our practices and routines and procedures are consistent across the schools, which goes back to how we talked about that staffing model with the elementary PLC expert guiding that and supporting that in each of the elementary schools. And then monitoring the effectiveness through the use of our benchmark data, our formative assessment data. Where we are right now, so we've begun work to explore this. In fact, we've been, some of us have been in the PlAT learning groups back in 2018 and even before that, working on this. So it kind of has been, the work's been interrupted due to COVID, but we came back at it. In December of 22, we sent a team to Learning Forward, which is one of the strongest national experts, besides maybe Solution Trees out there too, on PLCs. And so we sent a team there in Nashville last late, early winter. In spring of 2023, we put together a coalition of principals and teachers that are working now and continuing to work on inputting information such as our definition and our philosophy and our vision and our practices. So that's happening concurrently. In June of 2023, we're preparing, if this moves forward, to be able to offer a class course credit in ASDSA. In August of 2023, we're preparing to launch a two day PLC for principals and teacher leaders. And then through the first quarter of the year, building a nine to 10 week plan for rollout and implementation. It's going to, the conversation would be aligned with our ELA implementation plan for our K three teachers. So it'd be an ongoing and continual support for those teachers. But we know in elementary, we're not just K three, right? We're preschool all the way through fifth and even sixth grade. And so the plan would really encompass all grade levels and all teachers at the elementary level.
So looking at our next steps, we are preparing a memo for the next board meeting, the first one in April regarding late start Mondays to allow for the PLC time. Upon approval of that, we would then start to connect with the Department of Education at the state level to discuss our want to move forward with PLCs and to make sure our late start Mondays could be counted as a full school day in our school calendar. We would communicate with our families and our community and partners. There's lots of engagement work to do there. We would start our transportation planning, our bell schedules. There would certainly be a lot of professional development for teachers so that we could move forward. And then we would look at a implementation in the fall, provided that there's board approval. So we wanted to allow some time for question and answers, just because I know there's probably a lot.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm glad to see that you're thinking this way. Because I think for me, the things that are missing for our continual staff development is time to just talk and plan and review the data. And the guiding questions, Chris, those are wonderful. If everybody started at that point, I think the outcomes, that alone would improve the outcomes. So my questions, and I think everybody else's, is time and money and impact to students. And I know we've got about 15 minutes. And I do need to acknowledge that member Wilson is online and she's been there for a while. So she has joined us. So I don't know that we have to answer those yet, but those would be some of the questions for me. But I want to open it up to board members, member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And I appreciate the presentation. Thank you. I'm curious if there's an intersection between what we've just seen and then the ongoing conversation about start times that's going to be happening this week at the town halls. And if, and I haven't seen the slide deck yet, that's going to be presented at the town halls. But will we be combining these two concepts and presenting them as one to the community?
So through the President, to member Jacobs, I think that's a very valid question because there's two concurrent conversations going on. We're prepared as a team to adjust to the school start time conversation. So if we decide certain levels start earlier or later, that hour delay in Monday late start is adjustable depending on how we land with school start times. Have a follow up?
Yeah, thank you. And I don't know, and maybe it's a question for Dr. Brian, if the proposals that came out of the 2018 school start time process will be discussed at the town halls. But if we're going to present our vision, if that's part of the process for the town halls this week, I'm not sure why we wouldn't want to couple it with what PLC would look like as part of that. And I was just thinking through the 2018 presentation, I couldn't find it quickly enough in board docs, but I want to say one of the recommendations had high schools starting at eight or 8:30 with the extra hour. I would align with that anyway. And so at least our high schoolers, you know, have some acclamation to that. And so I guess my other follow up question, aside from that comment, if Dr. Brian wanted to clarify was, I'm assuming it was discussed at some point why PLC would take place at the start of the day versus the end of the day? What did that discussion look like and what were the benefits?
So through the President, to member Jacobs, in the work that we did with our high school principals and staff when we were developing a PLC model, much of the discussion around starting at the beginning of the day centers around a few different concepts. One is many after school activities take place across the board, not just at high school, but at our middle and elementary schools. Many of our teaching staff that would be engaged in PLC work are coaching as well. So if the students are staying after school for activities, they wouldn't be able to engage in the PLC work. So it really then is detrimental to the whole PLC model because we don't have as much of that teacher collective efficacy as we've talked about. The other reason for the start of the day honestly just comes from people being fresher in the morning. When you're looking at data and really trying to dive in deep to a topic, that morning hour tends to be preferred by most people.
Okay, member Higgins.
Thank you. I saw the data in regards to the benefits of the start times. I've not seen any data of what other schools have done and how this has impacted academic outcomes. I've not seen any data of what other schools have done and how this has impacted academic outcomes and what approach they took, how much was involvement coming from the teachers versus just the administration pass through. I think all those are important questions. And if there's some data out there that can be provided to us that shows what they've done in the other districts, I'm sure we're not the first one to do this, but if there's some data to show what's been effective, what are some of the pitfalls, I think to oppose and cons to everything. And we've heard the the advantages here, but I mean, there's we're taking time that could be used to something else. You know, our time is valuable and all of it can be used in some constructive way. So I guess I haven't I'm looking at a balanced type view where academic data is available. So I can see what worked and what didn't, or if there were issues or concerns. And I would like to see just some of the pros and cons to the approach, whether it's more teacher driven with topics, whether it's more just administration top down. I don't want to get into the conflict again that we've had in the past. I think between with some teachers, administration groups, what we've heard within that. So that kind of data would be real beneficial for me.
Okay, thank you, member Higgins. Let's go with member Holloman and then member Lessons.
And really, I just wanted to make a comment mainly for other board members. Teaching can be very isolating. You know, I say that I worked for twenty years in kind of a weird specialty where I was always the only person at the work site that did what I did. But I could stop and pick up the phone and call people, get in the truck and drive somewhere. I could consult with vendors, and it was really a lot of resources like that. For a lot of teachers, they get in the thing of where they go to their room in the morning, and that's where they are all day. There's not time in the day to interact with other people, except at lunch, and lunches aren't all that long. But it was just something that hit me as I came into it. But I also had the real good fortune to participate in a National Sciences Foundation grant twenty some years ago that was about collaboration between science teachers, a teacher from each school from a number of districts around the state. And and it's not something that comes naturally to a lot of teachers. And and you can let it go for a long time, and it won't get used properly unless there is oversight on it and some direction on it. And people begin to believe that it really is going to stick around for a while, unlike a lot of other great ideas that work marvelously well, but then they're gone after a few years. So I I hope that it gets incorporated into the culture. I think it would be a draw point for people to want to work in this district. And it keeps people from straying too far out of bounds if they're tied to their colleagues, and they sort of know what is happening in other classrooms. It's really hard to know what's even happening in the classroom right next door. You don't get to go watch while you're teaching. So it's all, I think, an excellent idea with a lot of potential for the long run.
Thank you. Number Lessons.
I'm really excited about this. It's been on my radar for a couple of years, you know, as the importance of that collaborative time, that time to be a professional, to have that peer learning and exploration and and time to do that deep dive. One question that I had, well, I'm also grateful in hearing this review of the benefits of professional learning time that the board stuck with the middle school model. I feel like this presentation underscored the value of that investment through the budget process. One question I had, and maybe this is kind of off the left field, is that if middle school is returning forty five minutes back to collaborative time for student support, does that mean there's any change in PTR? And I know that like there was a this is going back a couple of years. The PTR for middle school went up a little bit as a compromise for the middle school model. And this is where my backs are getting a little fuzzy, so. Without having varying on class sizes, I guess this version of time, the forty five minutes in middle school.
Sure, through the president, member Lessons, the returning of the this forty five minutes back to the collaboration time as opposed to a PLC model, it wouldn't adjust class size, it wouldn't, you still have educators engaged in that student support work for that time. It would it would, instead of taking that time that that academic teams can work together on student needs, it moves at the beginning of the day so that now, instead of an academic team, those four, six teachers working together, it allows them to be more creative in how teams of teachers at the building are collaborating on student needs. Right? And so it actually provides more more variety and creativity at the building level for those those collaborative opportunities to exist.
Yes, you have a follow up?
Yeah, and I think I wanted to echo member Jacob's thought just a little bit ago about how important it may be to link both of these in our public conversations this week. I am aware that the Hot Topics site is already live and the slides are up, and I already looked at them. So I'm just hopeful that these two are part of a tandem discussion.
Thank you. Come in, remember, remember Higgins, I mean, I'm sorry, member Donley, and then Jacob.
Interesting how this would impact our compliance with the state statutory requirement for instructional hours. Sounds like my math would be approximately thirty, maybe more than thirty hours a year. We would no longer be providing instruction. How do we currently comply with the nine hundred hours requirement, and how would this impact that?
Sure, through the president, to member Donley, great question, because it does impact that. And that that would be part of our engagement with with the Department of Education at the state level. Currently, the models that are in place at high school meet the minimum requirement for the the nine hundred hours you cited for a school. So we actually offer more hours of school than is required by the state. So we are able to operate with our current PLC model in compliance with deed. If we move to a sixty minute PLC model, that's where we would need to engage in some discussion. There are other districts in our state that have have moved to this model and and have gotten that compliance with the Department of Education to count their PLC time as part of the instructional day.
So you're saying that the Department of Education is not following the statute for some schools?
No, what I'm saying is that other districts have obtained approval by the Department of Education to follow the model that we've proposed.
Okay, member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, just a quick follow up to member Donley's comment. If there's any, I'm assuming there's data that we know of for districts that have moved to this model that would support the transition, that would be really helpful. And I I wanted to circle back and express optimism and support for the idea and concept. I think especially expanding resources at the elementary level for our educators. Member Wilson and I both during a school tour heard repeatedly that professional development for staff continues to be an ongoing challenge, given the constraints that we have at a number of levels. And so I know that we both support the concept. I just hope since these conversations, which are so closely tied together with school start times, are happening almost simultaneously, that we can tie these two, because I think they overlap their benefits from one or the other, I could see. So I'm assuming you folks even more. So appreciate the the presentation and humoring the questions. Thank you.
Yes, very timely. We are down to our last two minutes. I I did have a question. Do we have enough copies of John Hattie's book to share with the board if they're interested in?
I believe we could get them for you if needed. Yep. The the other note, Madam President, that I was going to say is if you go back to the research slide, there is a link there. If you really if you really want to dive in deep to the data and the the positive effects of a PLC model, there is a link on the data slide that says research at the top, right there. Yep, that link there gives you all the peer reviewed articles that has more data than you probably ever wanted.
All right, so we are at the end of our work session. I want to thank you and Dr. Bryant, thank you and your team for bringing this forward. I do agree that if at all possible, since we are having the the school start time discussion, it just seems appropriate that we at least mention PLCs, so people are not surprised. And if we have other questions, you can submit them to Amanda, and she will get them to the team. Thank you, guys, very much. And with that, I'll take a motion to move into executive session. Second, moved one second by member Lessons to move into executive session.
Madam President, I just want to clarify for the record that it's for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and contracts.
For the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and contracts. Seeing no opposition?